This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I want to thank everyone for joining today's meeting. If you're in the audience, just please make sure you put your phones on vibrate. If you would like to speak, make sure you put in a request. If you're attending online, please make sure you mute your line until you have the opportunity to speak. In attendance, we've got Supervisor Walsh, Supervisor Tinkle, Supervisor Gepfert, Supervisor Banks, and attending virtually, we have Supervisor Guy. Just need a motion to allow special privileges for Mr. Guy.
I made a motion.
Exactly.
I made a motion about second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Do we have speakers today?
Sorry, I do not have anything. I am not aware of anything via email or fax.
Great. Thank you. Okay, before we jump into staff reports, I just want to welcome Chelsea O'Rale, who's here today, shadowing our board session today. Chelsea has accepted our position as district manager. We are very pleased to have her and excited for her to get started. So thanks for attending today. So be on your best behavior, or today at least. So we start off on a good foot. No, just kidding. We will start with district council, staff reports.
Chairman, if I may, we had a late sort of arrival, I think it was yesterday. Hand down, we have hard copies in front of you. We previously discussed, and there's a second item on here, two, three, eight, one rely and two rely, with regards to making changes to two sets of the district's rules. One is permit criteria manual, and one would be the utility rule. We've had some good staff discussions with Kenny, Leslie, Laura, and I. I think Stephen was in on some of those also, Stephen Agapi. And the first one is a staff memo. We're requesting authorization to publish a notice of rule development, rule making, regarding proposed amendments to the district's permit criteria manual. If you recall, we have to follow a process outlined in the statutes with a two-step process, notice of rulemaking, rule development, and then we draft proposed language, and we have a public hearing. We have a notice of public hearing on the rule amendment. These are some areas. The background is noted, referenced in the memo. We, based upon the experience that Kenny's had in the field, he and his crew, and later on with Leslie also, with the operational aspect and infield matters. There are a number of items we'd like to upgrade or change in the district permit criteria manual. I think these are pretty, well, explained, the ones we have here. Now, this is not necessarily the exact text of what will appear, but these are the concepts. So that when I prepare the notice to go in the newspaper with regards to notice of rule development, I'll say generally, it's a proposed notice of rule development regarding revisions to the permit criteria manual relating to these four sections or five sections, without going into the detail. So what we're requesting is authorization to advertise and place a notice of rulemaking, rule development regarding proposed amendments to the district permit criteria manual.
Is this inclusive of all the ones? Because we've brought up issues over the last year or two that had to do with that. Is this inclusive of everything that we had talked about that we wanted to, going to make a change, let's get them all in? Were there other things?
Kenny, Leslie, I think for the permit criteria manual, I think that's what the discussion was. If you want to address that, Kenny, from your perspective, because I think Kenny and Leslie, more than operational aspect, had the most experience with what we need.
Yeah, I pretty much outlined everything in my, with Tony, and we pretty much spelled everything out that we really wanted to see, especially on the lift station side.
So some of these meetings we've had in the past, there was issues that came up, predominantly things that happened over at Pelican at the end, that pertained to the manual, that we would said, next time we make any changes, we'll get that correct.
We did that. We did that the last time we did it.
We did that last time.
Yeah, the vague areas, like the placement of aerators, we made it 100 feet like we wanted, and the placement of.
All that's, we're done.
That was all.
How about some of the finding criteria that we had determined, where for repeat offenders, being able to increase the fines of a second offense?
Well, that really defines what it, what we're talking about, would be changes to the rate schedules. And we haven't, this isn't part of this permit criteria manual. If we're talking about illegal taps.
Yeah, that's the fee schedule.
That would be in the fee schedule, and that's separate apart, but that's a good note. When we get to that discussion, the utility rules.
Yeah, because they will be, well, I don't know for 100% sure, but Worthington, and then North Haven, and then KOP Lawn, we could address it before we get to that, before they really get going.
I just want, I just remember we discussed some stuff, and I want to make sure we've got everything.
And so, Tony, if I'm clear, items to be published for consideration during this session, it has to be, it has to be within these items. So we can't have any walk-ons.
These are general points, and the first notice is very gentle. It'll say, notice of rulemaking to make revisions, and we just go down these five general categories. And then at the next board meeting, I talked to Kenny, and we believe we'll be able to bring back to you the next board meeting, underline and strike through versions of permit criteria manual with specific language, and you can look at that and say, okay, advertise that for the public hearing. Then at the public hearing, there might be some other additions and modifications or revisions that you want to do at that time. And for example, that one Kenny mentioned is the, like the back tea, you know, the back tea sampling test location. I think that's something that's come up recently.
Yes, and we budget that every year now. We've budgeted that in. We're trying to get one in every single of the 53 HOAs that we have in each community. It's just an ongoing process. We budgeted $8,000 for the 22 cycle, and that, I believe, got us nine. And we have four already installed. So as we go, within, I'd say about a four-year area, we should have, everybody should have one single back tea sample station in their community.
And that includes Mattarita?
Mattarita already has one, Casella has one.
Casella, okay.
Yep, yep. And another one, just if I may, the Thompson pumps for the master stations, that we really wanted to get in on the master stations. We have one that's, especially at Worthington, because it's going to be isolated from everybody else, kind of like Arborwood's going to be. So if we get it there when they build it, we're, we should really be in a good shape. Because again, like Arborwood, we face the chance that we might get cut off from them, like we did in Irma with Pelican, where we got completely cut off from that community. If that Thompson pump is in place, when they build it, we should, that should really, really help our cause, should that come across. And the vaults, getting the, out of the vault is another really big one, where the way the lift stations in Pelican Preserve were done, where they're above ground. Check valves leak, it's just, that's the way they do.
We're early enough in the permitting process that the developer will have to put it in.
Right, that's why we wanted to get this out there.
That's why we wanted it in the map. Great. One other aspect that Kenny brought up, too, we had a lot of discussion about this, to, for consistency of acquisition, consistency of maintenance, consistency of inventory of spare parts, consistency all the way across the board, we're naming specific brands and types. So we don't have a mishmash of panels, control facilities, control panels, control structures.
And the hundreds of internal components in those panels, we've got them, we've just really strived to get everything mainstreamed. So we have one pump, one panel, all the internal components are all mainstream.
Now, what it does, though, it does provide, it will provide flexibility and discretion to group alternate specs, on a case-by-case basis, but generally, you want to have a uniform, like an or equal. Well, we had that discussion about or equal, and Kenny said that at times.
You get into real.
Especially with control panels, correct?
Especially with the control panels and the submersible pumps. When we started out, we had five different kinds of pumps in the system, and we had five different manufacturers, and if that pump, it had to go in five different directions. So what we've done is eliminated that in 2017, when we bid out who we were going to, what supplier we were going to go with, to just maintain any new stations that come online, get the same pumps. And the old, existing pumps, as they come offline, we replace them with the same pump. So we have one manufacturer, one point of contact who's under service, who's excellent. If we have any issues with our pumps, they will come down here and get them, take them back. I mean, they'll do, it's an excellent company, and they're doing our lift station panels. So we're just trying to mainstream everything.
All right, so I just need a motion to approve board authorization to publish notice of rules development, development, rulemaking regarding proposed amendments to the district permit criteria.
All right, so moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi. Thank you. The next one, and this is, I didn't have the time, it's been a crazy week, to put the memo, the date on it. And this is, and this sort of ties back into later on, when Leslie has her report about the master meters and others, that this is a, we talked about a couple of things, the authorization to publish notice of rule development, rulemaking, utility rule. One of the items will be identifying, defining, clarifying the point of delivery, point of connection for the wastewater. Since we've had those discussions with the older communities, where we have, the cleanouts are not in the district right-of-way, cleanouts are up in the yards, we have the Y's and all those combinations, but also a process for master meter turnoffs, and that ties in to Leslie's item later on with regards to the policy procedure.
Thank you.
And then we'll also, the rulemaking process is a longer process, the process to get revised rates and charges. We're just asking, again, authorization to generally say, engage the process to make some revisions to the district utility rules.
How was your day?
Delivery, provide a master meter turnoff process and procedure.
How are we going to handle these that, like Kenny, we got at Calaway, where some of these people got caught by shenanigans of Westinghouse putting them in? We're finding stuff that it just wasn't done right, like a service lateral that comes over that was abandoned. I think it was abandoned because they knew damn well it was broken, and they didn't tell anybody. Well, we now put a camera down there and find out it's broken, and nobody's connected to it. But they, the people that were going to be connected to it, they rerouted them and ran them off their own property onto somebody else's property. How do you burn somebody like that? That's not right. So writing stuff that's retroactive back to somebody that doesn't even know yet that they have that problem or fall into it, to me, just didn't, didn't right. Now, I can see it on anybody new, but.
And the older communities don't have the visible cleanouts. They're five feet in the ground, determining that.
That's a good question, I guess, from the standpoint of just the authorization to say, we're engaging rulemaking, we won't get that specific, but we come back with proposed language. Maybe we can say for all service laterals after this point in time.
That would be the way.
I mean, I can't say that's what we will come up with, maybe that's a thought. But the problem is, we still need to define, or get some clarification, as to those older communities where we run into.
Well, the typical deal of at the right-of-way line is a, everybody does, that's typical. The trouble is, it was not typical, is when the developer comes in and runs the service lateral for two houses, three houses into one deal, and crosses two other properties. Nobody does that.
And the cleanout is way up in the backyard, way outside the easement.
Yeah, cleanouts at the foundation of the house. The other cleanouts don't even exist. So as long as we do that, I don't have a problem. After what I've seen, and the staff has seen over there in Calaway Greens, it's catch as catch can. You don't know what you're running into.
And that's what we would come back with the board, the detailed language that you kind of look at.
Nothing wrong with that.
Okay.
Because we're talking, the stuff we found to date is expensive. I mean, you're talking big bucks to correct some of these things we found.
And disruptions to the community.
I'm sorry?
And the disruptions to the community.
Yeah, yeah.
So what we need is a motion to approve chapter one of district rules, utility rules, changes?
Request authorization to publish notice of rule development, rulemaking. Yeah, that too. Awesome move.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi. Mr. Chairman, it's not undecided, but it came up in the discussion with regards to enhanced charges, fees or charges. And so Leslie and I will be working with Kenny and Laura in the next couple of weeks. And when it also comes on board, we'll, we'll come back with a proposed revised, modified schedule of rates, fees, and charges to address those issues. And that adoption process is only a 10-day notice, it's not a rule amendment process. So that's something that's easier to handle. And I would suggest that we bring those numbers back, that whatever hearing date we set for the rulemaking amendments, that'd be the same date as the hearing to change the fees and schedules.
Makes sense.
And so, any other rates or fees or charges that you think you all may want to address from the utility perspective?
Well, we wanted the fines, but we can't, but we can't do that.
Sure charges.
The, what we tried to do is for the irrigation of people not complying, and extraneous water is just to raise the amount per thousand gallons is all we can do. And I thought we did that at the last time, we're up to, what, about five bucks on the third tier?
Oh, I know it from the water.
Irrigation.
Irrigation, four.
Yeah, people are smart on water, because they know that that's inclusive of wastewater. So you're at about $10 a thousand gallons. You don't do, don't do anything stupid with potable water. That'll cost you a lot. But at 75 cents to $1.20 or $1.30, and then to $4 on irrigation, some people have that, and they'll spend it. I'm wondering about, if we just go back and put a fine in, is if you water more than twice, the two times a week?
Not a fine, what's the answer, surcharge?
A surcharge.
Thank you.
Surcharge. On the days of illegal watering, everything is double. Now, that makes it difficult on how we do billing, though, because I don't know how you would ever record that. I don't know any other way you can.
Leslie has all those three times.
You know, I mean, a master meter will be one thing, because residents will be calling you and telling you, like, there's somebody watering, you're going to care about it. But when it's individual homeowners, they're paying, like, I wouldn't necessarily care less if you were, if you were paying more and I'm not. Master meter, I think we can get a hold.
Oh, that's even worse.
But, but individual, I think it's a little more challenging.
Individual, right now, Vicki and I, sorry, Leslie, regulatory utility billing manager, right now on a bi-weekly, we run reports, so we can see exactly who's running on a non-watering day. So it's, would be just a matter of running a monthly report and placing a surcharge on that account at the end of the month, or we would.
So you can differentiate the gallons of water on a non-watering day?
Yes, as long as we're getting the data, we are able to do that.
But that would be a manual.
That was a perfect. I didn't like that last part. She's been hanging around a turtleneck too long.
Now, would that be a manual task to add?
Everything would just populate in Excel format from the website, and then we could just import that by mass into the billing system.
Is it burdensome or easy?
I think at first it will be, because it's a new process that we'll have to implement, but once we streamline it, it should be, it should be feasible.
Now, and that's not something that you can adapt to the system from a billing perspective? Is there?
No, it would have to be a manual process that someone would have to do.
But I guess the board could get the magnitude of that, have the time to come back with any proposed rates, maybe Leslie can run a two-week, do a two-week run and see what the magnitude, are there 50 people, are there 100 of them, or?
Well, I know that we do run, like I said, anyone who is violating the watering schedule, because based on usage, so we do, we do run that report, and I think last month, especially because of the rate increases that we're rolling out, we had over 150, 200 people that were using over 50,000 gallons, and we sent them notice.
So one second, does the HOAs have any authority over enforcement in those areas?
Well, it depends, it depends, for the compensate, if you do, like we do.
How do you do it?
We change the documents.
Oh, you change your documents.
If we, if you work outside of the.
The reason why I'm going with this, I mean, again, it's something we should probably address during the president's council next go-around, but if it's a matter of pulling a report, you may be able to send the, those that are warding outside of schedule to, to the HOA, whether it's the president's or CAM's.
Are you master metered? That's, see, that's why.
Yeah, but even if there's not, there's enforcement, or if there's things that the HOA can do, you can fine. But if not, maybe just simply having the HOA send a letter, you are in violation of the district watering policy, you know, this blah, blah, blah. If nothing else, it might just be.
Wouldn't the escalating fee that it's proposing serve the same notice?
Yeah, but it might take us a little bit of time, you know, to institute that process.
Because I like that, I mean, if they want to spend $100 a day to water.
Well, but I think, but it's not like we can just say, hey, tomorrow, by the way, we're going to start charging. You know, we have to, there has to be a communication strategy, and we have to communicate it. And I think part of that is, you know, one, letting the HOAs know, hey, here's your, here's people that are not adhering to the schedule. Two, once we come up with an updated policy for the service charge, then we have to communicate that out, effective, you know, whatever date. So, but there's going to be a time in between. And even if you are doing the surcharge, I think it still would be something that we would send to the HOAs on a monthly basis for them to, again, reinforce, because you're going to have to attack this from multiple angles.
Okay. Just a thought, and Kenny can correct me if I'm wrong, or Leslie, also, the regulatory scheme for the watering, the South Florida Lee County issue.
Correct.
And so I think a couple of things, why it's important, from my perspective, and advising the board, and Kenny also, Kenny's very protective of the permits we have, the water use permits, is to show South Florida that whenever we have to renew these, even though we have multi-year renewals, that we are not only complying with the rules, but we are enforcing it, either by surcharge, or, I don't know, referring to Lee County code enforcement, I think, doesn't Lee County code?
Yeah, but they don't want to.
They don't, they don't.
They're not going to.
So I think the surcharge is a way to show South Florida that we are following your criteria.
Why is, who's pushing Cape Coral? Cape Coral's.
Cape Coral's municipality, they do their, they do their own thing.
Yeah, they have code enforcement that.
Yeah, they have their own code enforcement and everything.
So they're doing it on their own?
Yes.
They're not, they're not under the gun from anybody to do it?
Like, I would, I would love to maybe meet with, either it's president's council or not, with master metered communities, just to put in some historical information that we have for magnolia, because you know, Kenny, we work really hard, just the amount of money that we have, we saved. I know, Leslie, the last time that I asked, it was over almost a million gallons of water in one billing cycle, in two billing cycles, that we saved, just by, you know, doing a few adjustments. And it was something that you were able to see right away, and as soon as you go to the master meters and you say, you can save this much money and equals on your dues, then the residents will have that buy-in, that board will have the buy-in, and they will do it.
That'll be a good topic for the president.
Yeah.
Understand the scope of the problem and the scope.
Yeah, so, I mean, I can assist with the master meter, the residential individual, I don't have any.
So master metered are the tricky.
So the master metered communities have not only the common area off the master meter, it has all the homes also.
Yes.
So picking who the violator is only is by observation, that's it.
It never, it never pans out that way.
But then, but then, what happens is, you have to work with the board and the management company. So when you explain that to the residents of master meter, so they know that if you're watering the day that you're not, I'm paying for that water. So they're most likely to report.
They'll be self-driving.
They, they, let me tell you, when you talk about their dollars, I mean, it was, I was impressed of how.
The HOA can shut off the meter on their side, too. I mean, on the days that they're not, and they have clearly defined watering days now that we've, we've put out to every HOA, and opened ourselves up for questions, you know.
How's the HOA shut the water off?
On their side, on their side of the meter. They all have, they have OS and Y's on each side.
There's a meter?
There is.
Yeah, there's a meter, well, our meter, our responsibility stops at that meter. Each side has a OS and Y valve on it.
So, so the line, the water comes out of the meter, and then it goes to everybody in the community, to the controllers. When it goes on to the individual yards, it goes to another meter? Or it just goes to?
No, no, we're talking shutting it off right at the master meter, right there. They can, they can shut that valve right there.
But that shuts everybody.
That shuts the whole yard.
If someone in the off days, if they wanted to.
We clearly defined their times and their days, and we addressed it, we addressed it at the president of the last one.
Okay, let's keep things moving. Anything addition for council? Okay, moving forward. District engineer, Stephen, are you on?
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Alrighty, I'm going to start us off with a task update, give you some other updates, and then Fred Middle, who is working on the bond validation, he's going to give an update on that project. So first up with the flowway, the flowway weir adjustments, we finally came to an agreement with South Florida on the last RAI for the flowway weirs. We're submitting that this week, so there'll be another 30-day review on that. And then on Pond 38, we're shooting for the first week of May to submit our initial application for Pond 38. On the phase two, year two lake bank restoration, we're still waiting on the LDO. I checked the status of it earlier this week. It looked like all of the reviewers were approving it, and it was just in final approval for like the letter of issuance. So hopefully in the next couple of days, we'll have our permit for the LDO, and then the Met Tower can start rocking and rolling. They're going to start in Stony Brook. As I mentioned, Fred's going to give an update on bond validation, on HB 53, the wastewater and stormwater needs analysis. We are working on plugging in all the information that we have access to, just from our previous knowledge on projects. And once we exhaust all of that, we're going to submit a information request, planning for next week to send that to Laura, to get information on that.
Stephen, does anyone have any questions?
Go ahead.
Then that report had to be in June 1st?
It does.
I don't, I don't remember which one, but will we be seeing a draft of it here shortly to see what that looks like?
Yeah, yep. Once we get the data from Gateway that we don't have, we'll be able to send that to you, and everyone will be able to review it.
Okay.
Stephen, one question, this is Bob. On the Pond 38 weir, I think I just heard, May 1st for the application submittal?
Yeah, the first week of May, yeah.
When, when do you expect the weir to be constructed? What is the timeline? Is this 10 months, 10 weeks?
It depends on how many RAIs we get from South Florida. We had a pre-app meeting, and they're definitely asking for a lot of information, so I would imagine we'll get one RAI. They submit the RAIs within one month of our submission, so that would be in June, and, you know, a couple of weeks for us to respond. That would put us into July, August, that we would get approval, and then we would be able to put it out for bid. So I would imagine before the beginning of next year, we would have it constructed.
Okay, thank you.
So more likely it's next calendar year.
Survive another year without it.
This process.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, another update. Last meeting, we spoke about the Arborwood drainage pipe that was installed outside of the easement. We, we have been talking with Lennar on how to address that. We told them that we're not going to accept it outside of the easement, it needs to be installed inside of the easement. They asked if it would be okay to install a junction box inside of the easement, instead of going all the way back to the roadway drainage structure, installing a drainage junction box approximately 20 feet off of the, off of the curb, and then from that point, installing a new pipe inside of the easement. I talked with staff, and we all are in agreeance with that option, instead of disturbing all the way up to the road, which can cause more problems than it's worth. Another question that's been raised is what should they do with the pipe that's outside of the easement? It's pretty deep, and it's pretty close to the home. You know, should they grout it? Probably. What's outside of the easement, I'm not real sure if it's Gateway's place to tell them what to do with it. I think that'd be between the home builder and, and the property owner. So I think we're going to see what they're proposing, and hopefully they will grout and abandon and place the pipe that's outside of the easement and close to the home.
Stephen, do you have a map that shows this where we're at?
I do, staff does as well. We'll make sure that you get that.
Yeah, what I would suggest, Stephen, is for the next board meeting, have an agenda item, the board review of this, and recommendation from staff, how to proceed with the graphics. And one aspect about the pipe that's in the wrong spot, the district, can you confirm the district has not accepted the conveyance of that pipe?
They have not. We have a punch list that was submitted in October of '21, with a laundry list of items that need to be met, and they haven't responded to that yet, so they're still outstanding items.
This is, this is on that bill of sale that they submitted over a year ago?
I would imagine it. I would imagine it. They, they did a request for bond reduction. I would assume this would, this is definitely part of that.
Are we talking about that 42 or 48-inch pipe that goes, leaves their property on the northwest corner and goes over and bubbles up in the?
Nope. No, sir. This is a, it's an inlet that's behind homes that picks up rear yard drainage.
Oh.
And then it's a, it's a smaller pipe that runs between the homes.
Okay, I'd like to see a map, see what that is.
Yeah, that's what I would suggest, even that we all, we do a memo for the next board meeting with it and also clarifying there, confirm that the district has not accepted the conveyance, ownership or bill of sales for this pipe because we don't want to get into the Aviano.
Is there a house on this lot yet?
Absolutely not.
There's houses on both sides of it.
It's already built?
Yeah.
Is this, is this right along the golf course? Or the lake, it's along the golf course?
It's along the lake. That's next to the golf course.
Jesus.
It's a mess.
It's what?
It's a mess.
Well, we had one, Bob, or a mess was the one that went underneath those condoms.
Well, right. At least they did the right thing.
This one's about, we figured about two feet from the house.
But we don't want to leave this totally on the.
But again, the key issue is the district had not accepted this. That was, that was the difference between this and Aviano, if you recall. So.
Yeah, that one was a little bit late.
Well, yeah, well, because Aviano was built so early in the community, we didn't discover it until.
Yeah, if we can see, see a little bit more detail, I agree with Tony, let's see more detail.
We need to protect the homeowner, even if he doesn't know it.
Yeah, of course.
If I can jump in on Stevens for a second, too. I forgot, I apologize. That the two lake, the two pipes, I think it's the one lake.
Matarita.
Matarita. The one pipe was short. Both pipes are missing the flared end sections. I had in a conversation with the attorney for Lennar WCI. He said, he advised orally that they, WCI Lennar, will correct that, install the correct pipe length and the flared end sections. I asked him to put it in writing, so I'm waiting for that letter.
Nice. Good job.
And to do the right thing, to acknowledge.
Yes.
That they have to do the right thing. Okay.
I'm sorry, Steven.
I said nice and good job.
Well, once we get the letter and once it's installed, that'd be good job.
We've heard these things before.
All right, so I'll make sure I get something for the Arborwood Drainage Pipe on the, on the next agenda. Last item that I have to discuss before I hand it off to Fred. Today, Bob Geppert and Laura and I, we met at South Florida Water Management District's office. Tony was there as well, but he abstained from the, the meeting itself. We sat down with staff to talk about the boardwalk in Pelican Preserve. I'm going to work with Laura and summarize the meeting minutes and get that dispersed for the next board meeting.
Yeah, and, and on that, that discussion, a memo to the board regarding, we have a memo, a memorandum in the agenda packet, and their various recommendations based upon today's meeting that happened with the staff in South Florida staff and the need for Steven to generate the minutes of the meeting right by South Florida to get a, an agreement as to the meeting minutes and the contents, we suggest that item be tabled. That's item 3C, with little I, little A.
Was this discussed at the meeting?
That, the, the issue about the carts and all that stuff was all discussed. Yeah, no, I was not, the reason why I was not in the meeting is the, originally the meeting was set up where it's going to be district staff and myself and South Florida Water Management District was going to, their staff and their, someone from their general council's office, which is typical. And, and at the last minute, I think yesterday, Steven, you were advised that there would not be representative from the general council's office. And from the standpoint of the Florida Bar Rules and interacting with another party represented by council, even though the district staff said, South Florida District Staff said, Tony, you can still be there, I did not get the representation or assurance from the general council's office of South Florida that they would not have a problem with me being there without them being present. So I did not participate. That's the Florida Bar Rules issue.
So this is to, to be continued?
Tabled to next, the next meeting if we could. And we've already had some initial conversations with Mr. Measy generally, because he has a great concern on behalf of Pelican Preserve and P-Pack. But that, that items in there plus other items came up, as I understand it. We'd rather have a table, we'll get the minute, meeting minutes and then have that.
I think we'll be able to have a much better conversation if we're able to table that to the next meeting.
Any recommendations?
Yes.
The memo will be out for P-Pack. Yep.
Steven's already hustling on that, right, Steven?
Yes, sir.
That was the deadline.
And I'm on PTO, but I'll make sure I check my email so it gets done.
Okay. Anything else?
Do we need a motion to table that, item 3C, little I, small A?
So a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's 3C.
One, 3CIA.
3CIA, yeah.
Yeah.
CIA.
That's underneath me.
That's real good, CIA.
All right, that's it for me. I'll pass it off to Fred. He's got an update on the Bond Validation Assistance Project.
Thank you, Steven. Hi, good afternoon, board. I haven't spoken at a board meeting before, but I'm here to do that today. My project I'm working on is this engineer's bond report. And we're working towards getting a draft report to the board in, in time to review it and possibly approve it at the next board meeting, once, once following, you know, two weeks. So I don't know if you're going to display those tables I sent to Laura, if that's possible, but I could discuss those a little bit. We provided some cost projections based on the CIP, the five-year CIP that was already published by the district and what we started from. And we're looking at those projects and compiling narratives, updating what the boards, what the district's plans are on implementing those, look at what has been completed this fiscal year, and what we met, obviously. Went through some of those. And we're trying to estimate what has to be deferred into the amount of money that the, the portion of the project that won't get done this year have to get pushed into next year. And, and that's an important point, I guess, because as projects get, you know, pushed forward, then they cost more. So that's just something to be aware of. And I don't know if there's much you can do about that.
Fred?
Yeah.
We're having a really hard time understanding you. You're very muffled.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to disconnect from my, I'm sorry. Sometimes my docking station interferes. Hold on, I'll be right with you.
The document that I'm pulling up is the same, I, it's not it, sorry.
Yeah, what, I'd like to see this report that he's talking about, well ahead of time to be able to look at this.
I did email it to everybody. I emailed it to the board yesterday. It's a PDF document.
Not, it's not, no, the report, not just the spreadsheet.
Oh, the report I don't have.
In other words, the proposed engineer's report, it's Fred's talking about, is a document, as you know, is necessary for the, for Russ to then do his assessment methodology, for us to put the package together, to do the resolutions and take the steps necessary to initiate the validation process for the long-term borrowing or various capital projects. And so we're hoping to have that, the timetable's gotten pushed back a bit. Hoping to have that draft at the next board meeting so the board can say yes, or get further direction and modify it. Are you there now, Fred?
Yes, I'm here. I'm sorry. I should have checked on the audio. Is that better?
No, much better.
Okay, sorry. This ancient docking station I have interferes. So Laura, I don't know if you want to display those tables, and I don't think I can, or if I can, I will, but I have them on my screen. I, I don't need to, but if you want to, I can speak to them.
And these, again, these are just.
I'm making you a presenter, Fred.
These are tables indicating possible projects, possible costs, contingencies, inflation factors to come to a number.
Correct.
And then the board, staff as to what to add. This is determining an upper level of the bond validation. Correct. Yeah, because the board want to look at this and say, you need to add to, to tell staff.
Yeah, that's why I want to see.
Add this, this, this and that to this. So when we do the engineer's report, Fred knows, okay, I need to project out, provide my opinion of probable costs for all these other projects. And then we throw in the other factors to come up with a top-end number.
Have we been, have we been sent this?
Yes.
I missed that.
It would have been around, what time was our meeting? 11:30? It was a PDF document.
11:45.
Yeah, 11:45 was a PDF document.
Can you, can George print some out possibly also? Would that be helpful?
Um.
Yeah.
I can send them. I just, I think I.
How many pages is it here?
She doesn't have it.
Two or three pages?
I can print it myself.
It's four pages.
Four or five?
Four. Four 11 by 17 pages is the way I.
How far into eight digits did we go?
Uh, well, this is where we went so far. And I'm the one, I'm, I'm adding contingency 20% and inflation 8% a year to anything beyond this year. So it's at 9.9, you know, let's just say $10 million.
So I figured it was the eight digits. And, and again, as we discussed in our, in a group meeting with Rhonda Mosing, we met Rhonda, who's helping us on the financing aspect, and talked about getting further direction from the board as to additional projects to add to this so that we can have Fred do the report to come up with a top-line number and top-line.
Yeah, there's just so hard no foul with the top-line number that is double what you come up with. I mean, it's ridiculous not to do it.
And, but the main thing was projects. And I think that was.
Define, define as much as you can, this, this scope.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification. So, yeah, we, we took out a couple of projects. If I'm, if you want me to give you, what, five minutes overview of this, or, or, you know, your, your call on that.
Mr. Chair, I think it might be helpful for Fred to go down each one of the projects so the board can see what's in there and then see what's not in there.
What's, what's typically the timeline on this? Because the bond validation does not have a limit, does it?
No, no, it does.
It just, well, it has a limit of dollars, but doesn't have a limited time, does it?
Well, usually what we do, we would, we validate, we would provide authorization to bonding and borrowing. I think Rhonda's indicating we're recommending 20. We can recommend, we can validate up to 30 years worth of borrowing, but I think the discussion's going to be 20.
20 is where we're leaning, yeah.
So, so then you would be able then to go FY 2022 to FY 2040 to projections of cost?
Yes.
And add all that?
Yeah.
And that's what you would, I think you want to do.
And then during that period of time, once again, the validation doesn't incur any indebtedness. You only incur the indebtedness when you actually do the bond series. Yeah, you do a series of bonds. And so that provides you the flexibility, as we did with the borrowing for Lake Bank Restoration.
So what you're saying, if our initial estimate is 10 million, wait, and that's only, we only did that for really three to five years.
If he did 10 for five years, you go 20, then you 40 million.
But you still have to.
Common sense.
We still need to be projecting out.
Yeah.
But, but, you know, even very high-level items, because I think if you're going through the validation.
That's why I want to make sure that we got everything covered.
Right.
Just, just to make sure that you're, you don't have to go through the process twice.
And that was.
A 20-year.
Correct.
So you got a 20-year funding, you should have a 20-year plan.
By, by the way, as a way of example, most CDs, if they're outset, have initial engineer's report saying, there's a thousand acre community, here's the infrastructure we think's going to be needed, roads, water, sewers, streetlights, landscaping, parks and rec. Create this number and say, we need $355 million to implement all this in five phases, 10 phases. And so then the, you throw on the contingency, you throw on the inflation factor, and so it's up to 400 million.
So Tony, let me ask.
Then they go to court, they validate the 400 million, they do an assessment methodology, spread the 400 million theoretically over all the property, and that gets validated. And for, so for the next, for the years, when you want to fund things, I've never seen a district take up the whole amount.
Yeah. So let me ask you a question. So, because I need clear, maybe my fellow board members might have input. So if, let's say if there was a project that we were going to, let's just call it, I don't know if it's a renovation or whatever, but let's say there was a project that we were going to basically tear this building down and build a brand new.
And we, we discussed that on the phone.
We do have that included as one of our items.
So is that still considered?
That's a capital project. Yeah. That's, right, we have an example, if you want to take this down, take that away, put up a pole barn and then put up two-story.
Just put it in here and.
The capital project.
That was one of the items that I did ask him to add.
Yeah, we talked about.
So it's in here?
Not yet.
Okay.
That'll be in the, this, the, the screen that we're looking at right now encompasses the money that we borrowed from Iberia Bank slash First Horizon or whatever. But as far as moving forward, he doesn't have that in here yet.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, what kind of dollar amount did you put on there?
That's a question for Fred.
Okay.
And if you recall.
I had to get him the stuff from Austin for the pole barn and we're going to use that as a place to start.
Yeah, and I would look at it as, as, as a, I mean, again, I don't know if we'd need to do this, but just based on what our options are and limitations that we've had in the past, I think it's a teardown rebuild.
Yeah. And again, again, the fact that you put a project in here and the fact that you articulate the estimated cost for that particular, in whatever year you anticipate that's going to occur, if, if you don't do the project, you don't do the project.
Okay.
And if you do the project, then you have the monies in there, usually a series of.
And I'm sure Fred would probably need a little more information in order to skip that out, but I would probably earmark about a million dollars.
Can't read either side.
Just.
This doesn't look like this. This, this.
Hang on.
We recognize it.
It looked okay on my screen. It did not.
Yeah, that's got to be done on 11 by 17.
I can't have all of them because they're useless.
Scrap paper. Yeah, the, the only, only thing that we want to make sure that we do is we have a line item and we have a year. And we fill in numbers. Then at the bottom, you put in a contingency factor for inflation.
Not trying to complicate this more than it already is. Is this the time that we put in the future recreational area?
I mean.
I had that on there as well.
You'd be, you'd be just making a mistake if you don't list everything.
You must have had another call, too. We did talk about that. Okay.
So you want, what are we going to pitch up for all, I mean, besides all this, all this look and give any feedback to you separately to add this?
Yes, please.
If Brad is going to need.
Please email me the suggestions. I'll be the, just email me. So, so far, I'm assuming we have the park thing on there. I'm thinking that the park may take longer and the pool is a legitimate expense that we may incur before we would get up to the park. Yeah, I mean, within the next couple of years, probably, if we're going to do it, that's a possibility, so we might as well throw it in there. I had the admin buildings and then the, the storage facility that we had talked about for, for Kenny's stuff and our inventory. So those were like three things that I gave Fred. But if there's anything else that you guys have that you want in there, just please email me and I will.
Non-operating.
Capital.
Purely capital.
And not utilities. This is general fund. So.
Yeah, by way of example, if you recall, when we did the validation for the Lake Bank Restoration, Tetra Tech did that, multi-page engineer's report. It outlined, we have these lakes, they have these issues, this estimated cost, and here's the basing for it. That's why we validated $20 million from borrowing.
So the water, sewer and irrigation in this, but the stormwater ponds and all that are in this?
Roads.
Roads.
So Fred, I think what we, what we're going to do is, the, the board is going to take a little bit of time to review and digest this. We're going to provide any additional items to Laura, and then she will communicate that with you.
Well, what I would suggest, because.
Understood.
I, I think, I think it's important to have a consensus of the board before Fred does it. In other words, there might be information for one person wants one, the other.
Well, I think we agree and agree in principle that we're directionally correct with what's been cashed.
If we can take and get all of our stuff fed to one person, that person consolidates it, gets it back to everybody, and then we say go, and then we give it to Fred. Otherwise, Fred's going to be doing this multiple times.
Nine different lists.
Yeah.
Right. Well, that's what everything goes.
So if we get, we get this in a form that we can look at, every one of us could extend this out to 2042, because you're going to have, some of these things are going to start repeating. If they have a, a design life of, let's say, 10 years or, add it twice. So all that's got to go out there. But I, I'd hate to see that you're doing one, I'm doing one, and then.
So.
Just, if we just coordinate through her, let her consolidate it all, then get us back, let's set a date, then she gets it back in that final form of everybody's combined deal.
Well, but in my concern, I don't want to say that we're having a meeting and a coordination, communication outside, in the sunshine law kind of issue. That's my concern.
Yeah, we're not doing that. And we're going to filter everything through Laura.
Yeah.
Or it's going to consolidate, and she will send back an updated list. Like, here's what we have, here's the additions that have been recommended. And then that will go to Fred for his revision.
Same thing.
So they're all in single sheets, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I just thought it was. It does get a little bit more complicated, but we won't be communicating. We just, I mean, we can even use this, add in this, send it to Laura, and then she just combines it all. And then just say, hey, this is the combination of everybody. So I'm not gonna know what Doug and their one. She's just gonna say, here's what, you know, the result of everything.
This gets a worst list, each one sends it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then it goes to Fred.
So, okay.
Gotcha. So let's do that. Um, so Fred, thanks. Well, we'll, Laura will be in contact with you with the next iteration of items. So Stephen, coming back to you, anything else from engineering?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is, can you hear me? This is Russ Wire. I'm online. I, I wasn't online, unfortunately. My internet kicked out and I'm on the phone. Before you step away from that, I, I really want to clarify a couple of things. First of all, we're going to do a bond validation. If you remember, we already have that, the loan, which we are going to replace with bonds. So there are gonna be, we're gonna issue bonds ultimately, but we have to do the validation first. So it, it is critical to make sure that we have enough in that bond validation, so we don't have to do this process again, which, which is, a comment has been made already. But I, I want to give you an example, and, and I've done this before, but out at Ave Maria, when we started Ave Maria in 2004, so that's almost 18 years ago. We validated bonds for 850 million, and we've issued 200 million, because we were able to do master and neighborhood bonds at that point. So it is, you know, make sure that each one of you take a look at, at all the items going forward. And see, this is 18 years under that bond validation, and we can continue to go on until we get to the 850. So make sure you put everything that you can think of in there, even replacement things, but it all, again, it has to be capital items that relate to the district, of course. But I just want you to be aware, we're gonna be going through two processes. I'm gonna be due to methodologies. The first methodology is the master for the bond validation. The second one will be for the actual bonds that we're going to issue to take out the loan.
So Fred, are you on this list where you got this last sheet, page four or four, you got a 20% contingency added and an escalated 8% annually for inflation? Are you doing that as a bottom line? You're not. You're doing it by item, aren't you?
By item. And so, so projects, it doesn't, you know, the, the one thing it affects is that, one of the things that affects is projects that were completed this year. Um, or the portion thereof that got, got done doesn't get, uh, you know, contingency or escalated. So that, that, that's a minor amount of effect on the cost, but it does show you the effect of deferring projects into the future because they cost more. So, so yes, each item is handled separately. We, not, not to get too long in the explanation, but we, we look at each project and where we were this year on percent complete. And that's in that first page of the table. And then the second page of that table shows where we think the new C I P would be. And then it gets the contingency added on page three, and then on page four, it, in addition to the contingency, it's escalated. So it's incrementally going up at that point. Each, each.
I'm sorry, I was gonna say, this is, this is Russ again. What I want you to understand that what Fred has sent out is really gonna be the basis for the bond, uh, engineers report. Because we want to add everything on top of this for the bond validation portion.
So, so our best bet would be for board members to stick to page one, project it to 2042, put what they believe to be the dollar values or something. Then let you guys do the manipulation of the 20% contingency and 8% inflation.
That's correct.
We're gonna have a mess if we do it any other way. In other words, we just stick to purely identifying the items and a year in which they would occur. And be done with it. Let the engineer estimate. Let, let them do the rest.
Okay. Well. Well, if I may say, we, we did talk about this, uh, I think with, with, uh, all the other consultants, and they said, yes, we, the engineer at Tetra Tech should add contingencies. Because, or else we're not giving you our estimate of costs. So there's a little fine line there. Um, if I think it's gonna cost to do that five-year C I P, $10 million, I want to say that. Otherwise, I'm relying on others to come up with that. So you can make the call on that, but you know what I'm saying there? Uh, how, how do you, how, how do I defend my number if, if, if I'm not getting you what the true cost is gonna be? If I say it's in today's dollars, that's fine. I can just say that. Today's dollars.
It's your report. In other words, you, you're the engineer, you estimate the cost, you estimate the 20%.
Change the numbers as necessary.
You're the one who makes the science deal, the report, and that's what goes to the court. So we're relying upon your engineers. Each board member might have an individual number in mind, but quite frankly, that's not relevant. You're, you're, you may say, that's a great number, I'll use it, but it's your number at the end of the day.
Yeah, we just see a lot of price appreciation, as you're fully aware of.
And you can, you know, throw in whatever you think would be appropriate valid number going out, X number of years. I mean, it's all based upon your engineering experience and, you know, based upon what you're seeing in forecasting. And that, and if you want to have a higher number, I think we talked with Rhonda about that, that if you want to go higher than 20%, that may be sustainable and justifiable.
And it may not be 20% across the board either. Some items may be 10, some items, you know, that they're, they may be 30 or more.
They can make a call on that.
Yeah, and that, that's, that's up to you.
The, the item is, is that the, uh, pond banks, our regular typical pond bank projects, they're not on here?
They are not because they're funded under, they're funded differently.
Because we're doing it that. Okay, that's what I wanted to find out. They're not inclusive in this.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Anything else for engineer?
One other thing for clarification, this is only the only, the area outside Pelican Reserve. This is just the gateway area outside Pelican Reserve, correct? Or not?
To the best of my knowledge.
For the capital project, we're not talking about any in Keppin, Pelican Reserve.
No, no, I'm aware. Plus they have to do with water and sewage and.
This is anything funded under the old.
Yeah, I can't think of anything.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So anything else for engineer? Okay, going to district manager's report.
Well, excuse me, I'm sorry. Before we leave, Russ, Bob Gepper, Russ, have you made, have you made any progress on, uh, explaining to me the difference between the two golf courses?
Uh, not since we had talked last. I need to sit down with you to go through the, the table so you can understand them.
Okay, thanks. I'm trying to understand why one course is playing five times as much as the other.
All right. We need a methodology explanation. That's what I'm gonna do.
Just educate me so I can understand the better.
Yes, sir.
Interim District Manager's Report, Laura.
Okay. Um, the license plate readers are now all installed. All the cameras are in place. They are all working. I logged in and checked them. All the angles are great. We're getting lots of reads.
Question on that. So if, I think there was a recent incident. If an HOA or if someone has an issue with, you know, if they feel like something has happened, it was related to a vehicle. Is it just, we direct people just to the county?
Actually, I have, we have a login here, the office does. Um, we can, they can go to the county. The, the sheriff's office also has access to all of our information. We can check it out as well if they want us to, or they can just, I mean, it's probably best to go to the sheriff.
But it is the sheriff, not the county, correct?
The Lee County Sheriff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay. Sorry, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, not City of Fort Myers, Lee County.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just briefly go back to the issue with the yards, to the capital improvement project, I think the better course of action would be that each board member send what they want to Laura. Laura then includes that in the agenda packet for the next board meeting. So that the board collectively, as opposed to having Laura make that decision as to what goes in.
Yeah, I was just gonna compile everything. I wasn't gonna decide. I was, I was, I was just gonna compile whatever they send me and.
Your only problem would be if I call it X and she calls it Y.
Okay.
Both the same.
So here's, what, what I thought was.
We can say the higher cost, but again, the cost is not gonna be us.
That's correct.
The only thing, if we go it your way, we're gonna be losing the meeting. We'll, we'll kick it back another meeting and see what the.
Yeah, I, I.
Is there any, any, anything wrong with that?
Yeah, I, I guess the question is, is she gonna sort through and evaluate, or are you gonna put it all, how are you gonna compile?
I need a deadline, so if we have it.
When you say you're gonna compile, what do you mean?
Well, I mean, just like pick a list, put them all in one document. I don't want to send a bunch of different emails. I'll take whatever they send me, put it all together, and then we can share that with the board.
Who prepared this spreadsheet?
Fred.
Right. So if I want to add four line items under one item, how do we do?
Just tell me, and I'll let him.
You just take the spreadsheet down.
Yeah. That's what I was thinking.
By my page.
Yeah. I just need, we just need to know.
She does that, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, we need to know what's to add.
But she won't, but I, I guess she's not in a position to sort and pick and choose which one goes in there.
Okay, so let's do this.
You're gonna go through all of it.
She don't put them all on.
Yeah.
And then we meet again, and then we determine when it went down.
Right.
And if you, if it ends up being a duplicate and I didn't see it as a duplicate, then we'll figure it out then. So we'll take it off. Like, if you call it, like you said, you call it A, you call it B, but you mean the same thing. And I can't tell that from what you sent.
It's cause.
Then, yeah, I can ask.
Either one of us.
I don't want it to be substitute for a meeting. It can't be.
Okay, so here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna review this report, we're gonna make our amendments, send it to Laura. Laura's gonna compile that. It'll be on our next agenda. We will review those items, we'll approve the additions, that will go to Fred, and then it will become part of the official document. Agreed?
Just please be advised that I am on P T O starting Monday, so I will be doing this while I'm traveling across the country. So.
Or we can have Georgia.
I, I can, I, I, I would like to be involved. It's not a big deal. It won't take me long to put it together.
Keep in mind, this is going to be a much bigger spreadsheet now, because it's going out to 2042.
Yeah. So keep that in mind. So our scope, our scope is 20 years.
20 years.
20 years.
If you could get everything to me by next Thursday, I will be somewhere, I will be where I'm going by Friday, so I will be anchored that I can spend some time to do it.
Your item's on in by next Thursday.
End of day next Thursday.
Take the, the main topics, any additional line items, and take them out to 25 to 42, you're good.
Just tell me what you want, when you think it'll get done. Yep. And.
We'd just put down a line item.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's got a useful life of 10 or 20 or whatever, then somebody else will add it further on. I don't, I don't particularly know how long things are.
I think part of the request was, when do you think that we'll actually start the project though? That was part of the request.
That might be.
So do you give me the item and when you think we would, we might start it? That would be very helpful.
I just want to make sure that, yeah, somebody understands that if something has a service life less than 20 years.
So when we go to review, we'll go through, say, hey, this item, this item is, uh, is renewable over 10 years, so we need to put this in twice, because we're gonna have to, you know. Yeah. Let's not over, overthink. All right, let's keep moving. Good luck. Laura, back to you.
I'm still going. All right. So the, the license plate readers are all in, they're working, everything is great. The east and west parking lots and the road are all done, striped. Uh, the power washing was done on the wheel stops in both parking lots. The painting was not done yet on them because they needed to do it on a Sunday, and with the way the weather was last week, they started some of them and didn't want to have everything wash off, so they stopped. They should be coming back this Sunday to do them. Um, they understand they need two coats, so if anybody sees them, they look a little light, they know they're gonna put two coats on them, so they're like half painted. Flavia, just letting you know. That's okay. Um, the KO Pelon, we had the applications for the permits for the potable and wastewater were signed and submitted. I did talk to Rick Berlinsky the other day when I rode over to Pelican with Mr. Tinkle. No building will happen for several months after the site work, which they're planning now, based on how long permits are taking, should start like in June for the site work, not the building. This weekend on Saturday, there will be a 5K and one-mile walk through parts of Gateway. I did put it on our Facebook page. It's that Run to Home Base. It benefits the veterans. It doesn't go through any neighbor, any of the individual HOA neighborhoods or anything. Uh, they're, they're taking care of everything, just more of an F Y I. Tomorrow, or tomorrow, yesterday Kenny and I went downtown to meet about the roundabout. Uh, they're still tweaking some of the plans with the fountain. It, the final plans are not done. Based on final designs and approvals and everything, best case, start for construction is November. Worst case, right now they're thinking is probably January, February. So.
Next year.
Next year. This January or November of 2022 or January of 2023. So I am meeting Juan up at the intersection of Gateway and Griffin tomorrow morning to talk about getting the irrigation hooked back up, because we had taken it down. We thought they were gonna be doing construction starting in April or May, and it's very dry, and now that we know it's not gonna be till November at the earliest, we need to get that hooked back up. So we're meeting tomorrow to discuss that. Uh, last thing, I did email you the revised S R F loan agreement. Uh, this was all approved at the January, or March 17th meeting with Tony's revisions. The piece that was missing from the last meeting was the lower dollar amount of the loan. Uh, it still had the $5 million in there, and we ended up borrowing 3.8. So, um, that's all been updated. Tony looked at it. He approved all the changes. It just needs to be signed. I'll need a few, get a hanger-on Africa sign that. And that's it for me.
Can you do me a favor? Can you have, um, someone to do a walkthrough with, with mainscape on the fields in preparation for any potential, uh, any potential shutdown when my have over the summer? There's a couple of these fields that are, um, has some bad spots.
Okay.
So I'd like to, if we can get ahead of it, we can take a look at it, do an assessment, do a walkthrough, and identify, um, potential, uh, repair paths. Because if we're gonna do some shutdown over the summer, I'd much rather maybe just throw some soil and maybe.
Sure.
Do something, you know, as cheaply as possible.
Jim should be back Monday.
Yeah.
So I, I will, I'll talk to Juan about it tomorrow when I meet with him. I'll, I'll reach out to Freddie and copy Jim on it as well.
And we do need to make sure the mainscape, when they're out there, that they're making sure they're checking all the, uh, any of the utility accesses or the, the sprinklehead covers. I've seen a couple of those where they're off.
Yep.
So they just need to be a little more diligent when they're.
Okay. If you see any of those, just let us know, because they are really good about going out and taking care of that right away. It's just that we don't lock them all the time either. So.
Can we go back a second to that deal? Did we, all of our staffs and the various departments give Fred input as to these things? For example, do we have the lights at the soccer field? Is that in here?
The lights are done. Just.
The.
The ballast boxes, that was included.
It is in here.
Mm-hmm. That was part of our capital for this year.
So all the staff have put in the things they know in their realm.
Yep.
That need to be done.
So what we need to do is, we need to go back to staff and say, this is a 20-year plan. So make sure.
This stuff's gonna happen twice.
Well, the thing is, it doesn't affect Kenny, because that's utilities.
Yeah, Kenny does.
So it's me, it's me and Al.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm just saying, make sure that staff goes back and does the revision as well.
Yep. Al and I talked about it actually.
20-year lens.
We've gone through this quite a bit with Fred.
The only thing I have is if, if, if it's possible, I would like to meet with you and Freddie tomorrow.
I'm meeting him at 10:30 up at the corner with Juan.
Okay. Of Juan?
Yeah, irrigation.
Okay, yeah, because I kinda wanna go over the irrigation stuff, because I think there's a lot of opportunities.
He didn't reply, but I'll text him just to make sure that I set up 10:30 up by the lift station I'm gonna meet.
All right. And then regarding the towing, were you able to finalize with the new?
Oh, thank you for the reminder. Um.
And just before, is there any more around this? So yeah, people like. So we all good with this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh, sorry, Laura.
Okay. Um, the company that's listed on our towing signs moved, and we are no longer within their 10-mile radius. So I did reach out to Reds, and thank you for that reminder. Um, I was planning to go ahead and they, they obviously don't charge us for anything. Uh, we would need to get some signs. Georgia was gonna check with Rick and get a count for how many of the signs we need, so we'll have to replace the ones that we have with the signs with Reds on them instead. I was aware, I think I counted four for sure. There's one at the pool, and I know I saw at least three down this side, but Rick was gonna do a count and let me know.
Places where they're gonna tow?
Yeah, because the, yeah, that's, because I, I mean, I will, I sent an email to Laura, because I did notice, I mean, no difference within the parking and the areas that we wanted enough to park. Uh, I know Flag Football did send out an email to the rest, to the, to the parents, asking them not to park. However, they asked not to park on the side. They weren't very clear not to park on the slope, but hey, it's an attempt.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna fix that.
So, yeah. I reached out to Lee County. They are gonna be patrolling. They have permission from, from us to ticket.
And that was the second question.
Yeah.
So that is not inclusive of the detail that we pay for, because he said it's only a night?
They are here at night sometimes, so it would be if they are here during those time frames. It would be the school that was not inclusive, because that's outside the areas that they're nor, times that they're normally in.
Okay. And then regarding the tow, the signs, just because Ed will know this too. So the sign, the, the towing signs, Reds actually does provide the signs.
They do, we have to pay for them, so that's.
$10?
No, they're five for plastic and $50 for metal.
Okay, so that's what I was gonna say. Usually they do the plastic, which is for every two years.
I was planning to do the metal.
And, and.
Yeah.
We did it.
Metal.
I was gonna do. We upgraded with metal, so I would suggest to go with the metal.
My, my plan was to do metal.
Your biggest problem with them is they are so, uh, underemployed. They're, sometimes they're our place, sometimes they're not, and it's very frustrating.
You mean the towing company?
Towing company, they don't have enough people. They, they can't even do our community. And people are very upset. One night they park, they get towed, the next night, the neighbor parks, no towing.
So this is Reds?
Reds.
Okay. I haven't signed anything yet.
Very, very big problem. Their, their problem is just like everybody else. Nobody wants to work.
Would anything opposed is was signed with two companies?
Your, your problem is a mileage requirement. You gotta have somebody that's within a certain.
Right, that's why the other company wouldn't, because we were outside their 10-mile radius.
I think there's another company by Pagefield, so I mean.
I was gonna check with, um, I have the card in my desk. It was the company that came and it towed one of our trucks when we got in an accident and brought it from the intersection back to here. Um, I mean, I was gonna check with them to see if they would do it.
Yeah, see, we don't have any problems with, with Reds, but again, we're a smaller community, and they, after 10 towings, they kinda know. So.
For us, they even have permission to just troll, and if they find somebody, they can just tow them. So.
Yeah, we.
We wouldn't even have to call.
It's been, uh, testy, very testy.
Okay, so.
Okay.
We're.
I will hold on that then. So I'll do a little more research and I will get back to you on the towing at the next meeting. I just got this stuff earlier this week, so. All right, now I'm done.
Okay. Um, moving on to Leslie, utilities.
Leslie, Rictorage Utility Billion Manager. Couple of updates. Uh, the May 2022 newsletter will be our fourth consecutive newsletter. So we are, that process's been running pretty smooth, so we shouldn't have an issue with that going forward. Um, it will include the annual water quality report, which is about six pages, so that insert will be quite large.
Are you, um, where are you getting content from? Because this is, we've broadened that, right? The newsletter, we've broadened. Are you just working with staff to identify content for that?
Yes. Georgia works on the admin stormwater side. I'll work utilities, but we try to pick, uh, completed projects throughout the community that are done. Any updates or upcoming news?
So the roundabout, it's gonna be November, because I know a lot of people mentioned about everything is driving. We know why everything is driving, because we shut it off. But I don't think that was communicated to the community, so they're probably just thinking, like, somebody's not doing their job. So I think that'll be a good opportunity for us to add, even on Facebook.
I feel that some phone calls regarding that as well.
Yeah, so I think that will be.
So if anyone has any topics, just filter them through to, to Laura and Leslie.
Georgia, please.
Georgia, sorry. Way to delegate. Good job.
Yeah.
Um, next is their Cartograph Operating Management. Um, next is their Cartograph Operating Management System. We are continuing to gather data for the test environment. Right now, core users are scheduled to do training the first week of June. Um, and then we're still on the path of a projected go-live date September first of this year. So I don't have any other updates right now for, for that. Uh, our master metered, the next is the master metered form, if you wanna bring that up. I know Tony discussed that earlier. This is just a standard form that I've created as a checklist for master metered potable uh, accounts. Um, for example, Royal Greens, they're on their fourth request to turn off the meter to their development of three hundred and twelve units um, because of leaks that they have to repair. It has been an issue the prior two times, just because of the inexperienced property manager, or if they should change management companies. So this form will be a guide for us and for them. So we will require this in order to turn off the meter, and I'll create another form in order to turn on the meter.
Why would they be turning off the meter?
They had a leaky valve in one of the buildings. And so
They don't have any isolation valves out in their system?
They don't. They don't have individual buildings.
Cut-in valves?
Right. So their plumber has to, in order to stop the water, they have to shut it off at the meter, the main meter.
I would think it'd be so much easier to just go to the main line that feeds the building and put in a cut-up, cut-in valve. And then they're done. Did it ever do that again?
I'll have to ask with Kenny. I think that was proposed a couple of years to the HOA.
Spend the money to do it.
Correct.
So the other people, they're, they're, we're shutting off the water at the meter.
Correct.
So they go dry for a couple of hours.
Correct.
For three hundred and twenty-three units.
Correct. And last time, I think they had a projected downtime of four hours, ended up being eight hours. So it's several residents who called the health department, who were calling us, uh, wasn't in our, in our control. So.
So they didn't put down any notices to anybody that they're
Uh, yes, they did. They, they did put out notice, but they said the downtime of water would be three to four, and it ended up being six to eight.
And this is potable?
Potable.
Child, what did I do? Do what?
Today, your way issue.
Right.
Yeah, it's good conduct. Yeah.
Um, the next item is the leak policies. I plan to bring forth an action item next month. Uh, the current policies are formatted from two thousand and thirteen. Uh, the next page, Laura, is what the proposed format. I'm just going to revamp the formats of these policies. Also provide any updates. There seem, throughout the years, there's always been some issues that we kinda wanna just clarify and put in writing on the policies.
And then, and again, to the extent that any of these require rule changes, that'll be in the proposed rule.
Okay. Um, other than that, I have not been able to have time to get the quarterly billing data and reporting that I usually do. We've been quite busy with the high volume of meter exceptions. Um, this quarter, we've had a backlog from last year roll into January and February. Zener was here in February, and they did assist with um, majority of the MIUs that we had not reporting. Um, so right now, staff is just primarily working on ETRs and about less than a hundred MIUs that are still um, requiring replacement or repair.
A hundred um, MIUs?
Correct.
When the guys go out, like the other day, they went, you know, the two mirrors, mirrors at the Walden Night Centrics?
Correct.
They dug those up, replaced them and everything. The MIU was sitting down in the pit. Are they gonna come back and drill those later?
Yes, I'll have to create a work order. Yeah.
That separately? Okay.
It depends on the box if
Yeah, I was wondering why our boxes weren't pre-cut to be able to slide the MIU right into it.
Yeah, I don't think they are. They're pre-cut.
And they did an amazing job of make, making a mess look really good.
Um, other than that, for this billing period, we did have a lot of phone calls more than usual. I think there was just a lot of things going on. We had the annual, the rate increase. We had the Iberia letters rollout. We had a few calls on that. And uh, just the high consumption calls, primarily because of doubt, bad ETRs that were replaced and the usage caught up. Um, so we've been quite busy with metering exceptions this quarter.
When you send out a bill, is there a way to indicate to the owner? Some of them won't even know what they've thought about, but is there a way to let you, let them know that the bill is based on an estimated number?
Um, I'll have to get with the developer to see if that could, is that the field that can be indicated? Um, I do know that when I have an edit or an adjustment on a bill, I'm able to provide that note to that particular customer.
Cause if I see my bill and it's strange, and I've got a deal that says that it's estimated, then I know that it in, next time will probably average out.
Right.
But if I didn't know on there, and then I see the next one, I'm wondering, okay, what the hell happened?
Right.
Something doesn't make sense. So if there would be a way to just let uh, owners know that when they get their bill, it's an estimated bill. Uh, and we could maybe in that newsletter you were talking about, let people know that estimated bills, the next time or the time after that, those, those average out.
Yeah, I'll get with the
But that's the way life is.
Yeah.
We're used to that.
Whether it's water, gas.
Yeah.
Right. I'll get with the developer. I know that I'm able to run a report after the bills have been posted, but I'm not sure if I can get anything before. So I'll get, I'll follow up on that.
The reason I bring it up is because sometimes you start doing estimated bills and you get into volume changes and you go from tier to tier. You may not have gone to the tier if it would have been a, a correct read.
Yeah.
And now all of a sudden, you've got a bill that's questionable dollar value.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Leslie, I just have one feedback. Do you want feedback regarding the proposed policy? Or you want me to just give it to you now? I just saw one thing.
Okay. So page one, uh, so it says for the resident to be eligible for the leak credit. You see it?
Were you?
Yes. Okay. So it says that the um, with no past due balance, no more than one occurrence of late payment or disconnection in the last twelve months.
But then when you go to page two, and then you go to definitions of good standing, it says no late payments over twelve months.
Yeah, it, and this is a rough draft. It's not final.
So it's one or the other.
Yeah, we're trying to see, we, we constantly get challenged on what is defined as good standing. So um, that's why in that number one on page one, I put twelve months or current. So that's just a couple of things that were kinda
Yeah, but then on page two, you say none whatsoever. So you say
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good standing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
I wish I'm fit, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I will work on uh, finalizing these. This, that's just a rough draft that I put together, just as a preview.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Leslie. We appreciate it. Nothing from Kenny today?
No.
Okay. So moving on to action items, uh, four A, Tim. This is funds around the pool.
Tim Howman, Gateway Commons Pool Supervisor. So uh, I was, I missed the last meeting, but, but prior to that, I had sent out some estimates or bids and proposals for uh, redoing the pool and kiddie pool, uh, re-refurbishing it, which would include the tile uh, and plaster on both of those bodies of water. Uh, the three I supplied you with came in at uh, one forty-six, one eighty, and one eighty-nine. I recommend we go with Infinite Aqua. Um, they were the lowest bid, and honestly, even if they were higher, I would have recommended going with them. Uh, they're trusted. We've used them before, and uh, they can get to it fairly quickly.
And Tim, correct. So this is tile replacement, but it's, are we also talking about coating the pool?
Everything.
So they're gonna resurface, they're gonna update tile, that what they're not touching is coping?
No, they will do the coping. Cause the coping on our pool is tile.
Oh, that's right. Cause it's tile.
Right, right.
Okay.
Everything exclusive of the deck.
See, this is why I raised this question earlier about the, the schedule. Uh, under the pool, the Parks and Recreation, this hundred and forty-six thousand's not anywhere in here, even as a line item. That's what I'm worried about.
Yeah.
That's what I'm worried about. Has everybody put in all the things they've thought about? And to me, this is one we knew was going, and it may be a timing issue.
Well, I think, I think that would fall under the much larger park
Right.
Project. I mean, that's how we were thinking about it prior to. We weren't separating out. We're saying, okay, we're gonna do
But it's still cap.
Yeah.
Right. But the four pages that you have are based on the money that we borrowed in the loan, and nothing
But, but I understand your point.
So we, we need to really look at this as far as items, cause there will be more stuff like that
Sure.
Come up. Okay.
Okay. What do we need to do then?
So you're recommending us uh, if, the first one, the hundred and forty-six?
Off-road. Yeah, approve, approve funds, uh, so I can get the, the ball rolling on that.
What was the estimated time that the pool will be closed for?
Uh, it, it will probably be about two weeks.
So sooner better than later.
Yeah. We'd like to do it before the rainy season.
And we did not, did we put any, no budget?
Nope. The only thing we budgeted was for the pump
For the filter.
The filters, I mean, and the pool furniture.
Okay. So let me ask this. So the, how much, and I know this isn't apples to apples, but for the weird project, how much do we allocate for?
Half a million.
Okay. So that's a twenty, we won't start that project until twenty twenty-three.
Which project?
The weirds.
What, why would we wait?
Well, because we're not gonna have, we won't have approvals in design, anything until after September.
Okay. So in other words, it's time, so it's time.
Yeah. So.
So transfer the money from the weird line to cover the pool?
Then bust the, or bump the other one up.
And that would be my recommendation is, is to take, is to reallocate from that.
Have we got something? Cause I'm gonna hear about this. Have we got, is the health department or anybody on us on this issue here?
Uh, no, other than what I've spoken about previously, which is the tread of the gutter around the pool. That has to be addressed. Um, in the first bid that I showed you before, a proposal to do that, in fact, it's on Infinite Aquas. They broke theirs out. I believe it was about fifteen thousand just to do the tile on the tread only.
Yeah.
Now they took that out and included it in the overall bid uh, to do the whole pool.
Well, and
So that's all the health department's requiring us to do right now.
And once you start updating, then you have to
Bring to compliance.
Everything up to compliance. So
So as long as we keep the same footprint of this pool, we're only gonna have to pull a permit for a redo. We're not changing the footprint. We're not updating the pool. So we're, which means we don't have to add extra, like changing rooms in the bathrooms.
That was my concern. Cause I know once you start updating, then you, you fall into uh,
Right. Even our old handrails can stay, uh, the foot grabs.
So what is the threshold? Is, is it the, the size of the pool, or was it the quantity of items being repaired or, or replaced?
So I missed the beginning of
Well, what is the threshold for us to be, bring everything, bring everything up to compliance? Is it the size of the pool if it gets bigger, or is it the amount of repairs being done?
What we do to, to change the footprint or the hydraulics of the pool. Anything hydraulically, we would have to, wouldn't, let me back up. They just need to get a full permit. But if we were to add a feature on the pool, at that point, we, we're gonna have to do everything.
Okay.
Yeah. So um, consensus from the board, is there any dissension on uh, doing this project?
If we didn't, if we went back to the thing that we had to do, which was the fifteen thousand or whatever it was on the, uh, the edging, uh, how long? How long is, it, it, it sounds like we're on a ticking bomb here. How long will it be before the bomb goes off?
Uh, it's gone off. So I think I let you guys
It has to be done.
It has to be done. This, uh, I mean, you, you can get twelve years out of a finish. Somehow this has managed to have sixteen out of it. It's falling apart. People, people have to wear water shoes in the pool, and they get, it's just, it's done.
It's crumbling.
It's done.
Okay. Um, so I will make the motion to approve.
My recommendation would be to move a hundred and sixty thousand to give us a cushion.
Okay. So
Out of that, out of that account?
From the weirds, transfer from the weirds to the pool.
Just make sure that we got that footnote, so we remember.
Yeah, Sonia, when she does the transfer, she marks everything, and we have a paper trail.
Oh, sorry.
One. Okay.
So we're gonna make the motion to approve uh, the work to be done at the pool uh, not to exceed a hundred and sixty thousand, and the work be granted to Infinite Aqua as the lowest, uh, what's the term?
Why are we going to a hundred and sixty if it's only a hundred and forty-six?
Uh, there, there could be incidentals that shouldn't be.
Okay, okay. So it's a contingency.
I figure we only have to ask once then.
Okay, got you, got you.
Lowest, most responsible. What, what?
He needs a flashing sign.
Well, there's about five things that we say repeatedly. We should just, I think George used to print them out. Um, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So I have a motion. You have a second?
Thought somebody did.
Bob's second.
Bob's second. Motion's second. Any further discussion? Okay. Uh, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Hi.
You opposed?
Congratulations. Thank you, folks. We'll get that going.
Yeah.
That's it for me.
Okay. Thanks, Tim.
Tim, did we get any of your furniture?
I know.
We're, we're still in a holding pattern.
Okay. So maybe at the
Have you heard of the supply chain?
Yeah, I know. I haven't been there.
Tim, really quick, what's your timeline on this?
So we'll have to go in for permitting. That'll probably be the longest. Uh, project itself should take around two weeks. Uh, I'll start on the permit processing tomorrow.
I mean, and so two weeks, and then what's
So we'll close the pool for two weeks. I mean, I'm not saying you can start in two weeks.
No, I understand that. But so ballpark, you're thinking
When will the pool be closed?
I'd like to, I, I foresee this starting in probably about six weeks, if, if all goes well.
Okay. So we hope to have everything complete, let's say by June.
June one?
Yeah, that would be
So it could be closed.
I'll, I will shoot for that, and I will push for that.
And it would be nice to coordinate the new equipment coming in around that time.
Actually, no.
Yeah.
We're only closing down about a day for that, and that'll be here uh, next several weeks.
So the month of June could be the pool closed.
Yes, and, and I will keep everyone updated to that. Uh, and as we go along, we'll, we'll put out notices for that as well.
I'm sure people can use the club pool. They won't, they won't
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it's gonna be, our Northerners are
I know he's address.
I'm Mr. Tinkle, yes. It's funny, all your guys' mouths is moving, but I don't hear anything.
Okay. Thank you again, Tim.
Alright, guys.
Uh, so Laura, you're gonna cover the next few
Yeah, the rest of it's all about me. Alright. Um, this is the software that I talked with you about last time. Um, the Granicus is the same software that Lee County and the city of Fort Myers use for their meetings. It would allow us to have our agendas published in an ADA compliant format, uh, as well as any minutes if we wanna publish them, which we don't currently have on our website. This is handled in a completely separate space. They take care of making sure everything is compliant, publishing everything for us. Um, anybody in the public will be able to go to our page, click on the agenda, uh, and they can click on each of the board items, and, and everything would open up for them.
And that allows for the public and for the board.
Anybody would have access to it. So.
No more records request.
Are you for
No more.
Later with this? Is that just another product, the same function?
And the, the pricing is based on the size. So obviously, that's considerably less than Lee County and City of Fort Myers paid, because we're much smaller. So it would be um, fifty-five hundred dollars for the first year, and then um, I propose that we take, if, if approved, that we move the funds from the reserves, and it would go under their software license fees and renewals. Since I'm trying to track all our software costs separate this year.
So we could probably just, again, eat into the uh, the reallocated weirds dollars, the way you did want to pull from reserves, that those dollars aren't gonna be spent.
That's your, if that's, I, whatever.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I leave reserves alone.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if we're not gonna use it.
Something so small.
I mean, we should probably make the decision to table, you know, to put a circle on that dollars anyway, cause we're not gonna use it twenty twenty-two. Chelsea, just really quick, do you guys have any issues with Granicus?
If you don't mind, just Bill won't hear her.
I mean, I mean, if it's just apples to apples.
Chelsea O'Reilly, Granicus is the big name in the game. Um, the only reason we transferred over to Civic Clerk was uh, to be compatible with our AV equipment. Um, which at the town, we have very, we just spent like two hundred thousand dollars on our AV equipment. So um, I can use both. I've used both. But um, I would definitely say Granicus is the
Is a good system.
Yeah.
Okay. And we don't, you know, if we do make any updates, we'll probably do it in conjunction with whatever is compatible with Granicus. So we don't, we don't have to back in.
I would definitely recommend on any type of agenda management system, because it's sitting in the audience today, and you guys are going over items. I'm sure they would like to be seeing what you guys are looking at too. So.
Okay. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Um, so
We need a motion or
Motion to approve?
I saw make that
Second. First and second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
And to clarify, the funds will come from the weirds?
Yes.
I am keeping track of all of this.
Yeah.
Have a D-Duck.
Don't worry. I know that's your baby. I make sure the dollars are there. Get it paid out back twenty twenty-three.
It's, it's Bob's baby, because he's the one that gets flooded, not us.
For fiscal twenty-three going forward, I'll make sure it's in the budget, but I just don't have it in the budget.
What is the, um, so, so to get the Granicus up and running is, how long, how much?
Uh, it should be fairly quick. We sent them our outlines already for our agenda and everything, I would say within a month, I should be able to get it done.
So can we talk to them too about just overall, just, uh, just opportunities for just improvements? Whether it's audio here or better ways to manage, you know, uh, that's the.
They actually have a, they have a, uh, a platform that they do for meetings, that actually will record, and the, the link is right on the site. Uh, maybe different than the go-to that we have, but I'm, I, I will get that. I did not have them include that in this, because we already had a solution for that. Mine was more about the, the agenda and, um, document managing at this point, and that, that was the main focus.
Yeah, I would just say, if we were, because we do have, we have dollars allocated for, um, for boardroom renovations and updates, so if we were looking to update.
Oh, I.
Do they have any?
Kinda off topic, but that same vein, um, I did task Georgia and Julie with looking for some new chairs for the boardroom, because these are.
We already addressed that for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are sunburned.
But I'm saying, if there is, yeah, while we're having those discussions with Granicus, if they do have recommendations for just overall efficiencies in a, in our setting, both for the board, for the audience.
Sure.
And those attending virtually, I'd love to just keep improving that process.
Absolutely.
Maybe a branch.
Yeah, right?
Can of gas.
Okay, uh, what's next, Laura?
All right, um, the budget timeline for fiscal twenty-three, I have a preliminary, um, as I'm sure you know, that our, you must, the board has to approve the tentative budget and set the public hearing date honor before June fifteenth of this year. So, uh, the June board meetings are the second and the sixteenth, so you will either need to have it approved at the June second meeting, or we will need to change or add, uh, meeting to accomplish that June fifteenth deadline, just letting it know ahead of time, so.
Everybody get with the second, I mean, set the high watermark in the second, I don't think it's that.
Well, it's setting the high numbers, what?
Yeah, it's the high watermark budget, yeah, it's, it's not the, the, the budget doesn't get adopted. Right.
I think we should be able to do it by the second, that's not a big.
Okay, so I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up that it falls weird this year. Um, as of, actually, today, I, I do not have any budget templates from Infomark, they usually come, it'll probably come while I'm out, so I'll get those out to staff as soon as I get those.
I mean, budgeting, I think, should be easier this year, because we've created the CIP in this, this, uh, uh, this funding timeline, it should.
Oh, you optimist.
I threw together just a quick kind of tentative timeline.
Okay.
Um, so, this is just, it's in your board pack, it's, it's all subject to change, it's just, I kind of use the same timeframes as we did for last year to get everything in there.
Well, it's all general fun stuff, too.
So there, there's no action that needs to get done on that, that's more just like, uh, FYI for you guys, I need to make you aware that it's coming up, and we needed to do it, and make sure that there weren't any issues with the board meeting dates.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'd like to ask the attorney, if this, uh, June fifteenth is a ministerial date, uh, or is it a drop dead date? In other words, if we have our meeting on June sixteenth, uh, and adopt the budget on that day, is that a fatal defect?
It's a, it's an opportunity for someone to challenge the budget.
Can you speak into your microphone, Tony?
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill. Uh, I had it off. It's a, it's an opportunity for someone to challenge the budget adoption, because I believe it says shell, I'll double check the statute, so we've always treated it as mandatory, and not merely ministerial.
But if we don't do it by the second, we can just.
You have until the fifteen.
You, you continue the meeting to the.
Another day.
Another day.
Prior, yeah, honor be prior to the fifteenth, so we have done that before.
Yeah, I think what Bill was asking, is it a drop dead date? And yes.
Yes.
Yes, that's why it's big red and white letters on my schedule here.
Yeah, thank you, Bill.
What was the answer there? I heard a whole lot of stuff, mandatory.
It's a mandatory date.
It is a drop dead date.
Um, so moving on to four D.
Okay, um, this ties in a little bit with what I was talking about earlier regarding irrigation. I do have a proposal for Mainscape for roughly thirty-six thousand dollars to start the first baseline controller for the zone control system updates that we have in the budget, it, which is part of our capital improvements for fiscal twenty-two. Um, as you know, that many of our zones are controlled by nine volt batteries, uh, so we do have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars set aside for fiscal twenty-two to start this project, so this is well within the budget. It's slightly over my approval limit, which is why I'm bringing it to you. Um, I, although that, those funds have already been allocated and approved for that, I just wanted to make you aware that I have this proposal, I would like for them to do it. The first controller will go, um, right down the street on Griffin, uh, across from the left station by the seven eleven. It can handle two hundred zones, there are currently sixteen zones in that area, and when I talked to Juan about it, uh, the plan is to, um, once it's in and everything gets kind of settled with the roundabout and everything's hooked up, is to head towards eighty-two, because it can handle two hundred zones. So head towards eighty-two, get all of those on that one controller, and then.
Eighty-two go, going on Gateway Boulevard.
On Gateway toward eighty-two, yeah, sorry, gateway, down Gateway Boulevard towards eighty-two. Um, there's more than enough space on that controller to handle all of those zones, and then we will be able to start working the other way a little bit as well.
Whose equipment is this one based on?
That is a, um, uh, baseline, same as what we have in over here, it'll tie into the soccer fields that we have over at the soccer field.
So it has both the, uh, soil sensing?
Everything's in there, yeah. It's the same thing that we have over here at the soccer field, it ties right into that, so they'll be able to control everything through that. The, we already have the brains, which is where we're saving some money, this is just for the controllers and the labor, or the controller and the labor.
So you're looking for a motion?
Uh, yeah, I just need to prove it, because it's, it's just outside my, it's just outside my spending.
What is, what is your amount, thirty-five?
Thirty.
Thirty?
I think it's thirty.
Thirty.
Yeah, so it's just outside, even though you guys already approved it for the irrigation's on control, I.
Okay.
So I'll make that motion, and then.
I'll second.
Motion and second, uh, call the vote, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
Right, I'll get that PO, I'll let, I'll let him know when I talk to him tomorrow. Um, uh, this is something, Tony can probably talk better about this too, uh, the resolution we need to have because of the elections that are gonna happen this year in twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, this is a standard election, it just confirms having supervisor elections, conducting the elections, and it sets, the timeframe is set by the state of Florida, and that's outlined in there too, as far as the qualifying period, and the district needs to publish a notice in the paper as to the, uh, qualifying period for the election. And the resolution addresses one that has to be published. The Secretary of State has already published, supervisor elections already published in the paper, the election dates and the various positions that are open, uh, for the various entities in Lee County, so. This is all in good order.
So this is just awareness, just, uh, or do we need to actually approve for staff to?
We need to, uh, uh, first of all, we need to approve the resolution, and then also the district needs to publish the notice in the paper, the qualifying period.
Okay.
And similar to the one that's attached, well, it wasn't one attached Exhibit A, but we have a notice. I'll attach a form of Exhibit A, which we've used before, which gets placed in the newspaper.
Okay.
Um, in fact, the, uh, while you're doing that, I'll get the exact statute. For that.
All right, motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve twenty twenty-two oh nine.
I'll second.
Yeah, motion and second, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion case. Okay, the, uh, last item is four F, Lake Bank Restoration, Daniels Preserve.
All right, um, I'm actually exchanging emails with Stephen as we, as I'm sitting here. Um, during the process of the repairs to the pipe between the, what they're calling Lakes Four and Six and Daniels, um, the one under the pipe in Six, I believe it was, was actually below the lake bottom, which is what they had kind of, based on the fact that they weren't able to, to get through when they were trying to clean it, so, um, the pipe was at about twenty feet, and the pond is at twelve, so they had to basically excavate seven feet of rock to get to the pipe opening. Um, because the rocks were so big, and with all the excavating that they needed to do to clear the end of the pipe, uh, the, the pond bank slid. Uh, so we have an issue at the end of the, of the pond bank that needs to be repaired. Um, Scott Connell and L worked with Stephen Agapi at Tetra Tech, and, uh, they came up with a plan to fix it. Uh, Brad proposed it, which is what's here, Tetra Tech is fully on board with the solution, the way that this is gonna be done. Um, they, we waited to get their approval before I even came to you with this, so, um, what I have here, the second paragraph, the lake, it's about eighty to a hundred linear feet, it's just completely dropped off, there's nothing there, so they're gonna grade it, and they're gonna put some bigger rocks under, down where the pipe is, and basically just work the way up. Yeah, rip rap.
And is this, does this just, um, add to our, uh, just for the, the project amount, the twenty-five additional?
It shows down here in the bottom, um, we have something for the Daniels Preserve stormpipe replacement, and it has of, we had a four hundred and forty thousand dollar budget. Without this project, there's still three hundred and eighty thousand dollars left there, so there's more than enough money.
So we're just gonna pull what?
I will, I'll just use that fund, since that's what it's for, so.
We were told that we needed everything, the bells and whistles, and we didn't.
Yeah, when Scott told me about this last week, I was shocked that the price wasn't doubled, this number.
Me too, yeah, so.
Well, they didn't have to replace, put it by your end section, and that certainly helped.
Yeah, the pipe is intact, they just need to secure it, and they are changing a little bit, um, then, the other side, they did a forty-two inch elbow, and on this side, because of the, the, um, the angle to get to the opening of the pipe, they're gonna be using a thirty-six inch, and so they'll just, you know, seal it in there, concreted in there, and it'll be, it'll be fully sealed, it'll be safe, but it'll, it's, it won't have the forty-two inch like on the other side, there's just no way to fit it in there.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Inspection was real good back there.
We'll make a, yeah, we'll make a motion.
I'm just looking for approval to give them the go-ahead.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? I'll call the vote, all in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Any opposed?
And the Laura show is done.
Mr. Chairman, just briefly going back to the last item on the elections, and Laura, if you can make a note, uh, we have to publish a notice of the qualifying period, at least two weeks before the start of the qualifying period, so get with me and I'll prepare the formal notice for you, so we can get it in the paper.
Put it out in early May.
That was our plan, by the end of April.
Early May, so, if you remind me, send me a reminder on that, I'll send it to you.
Okay, uh, moving forward, any items to pull from the consent agenda, uh, five A through D? Motion to approve? All in favor?
Hi.
Laura, uh, future board business, is there any, any items that we need to, uh, be aware of?
I don't have any.
Okay, uh, Tony, do we have our closing source?
Fine. Yeah, it's a fiber they're at.
Yeah, pull it ahead.
No, I'd rather not. But see, net statutory exemption is strictly construed, so I like to stick to it.
I was okay with no.
Uh, supervisor, supervisor comments. Bill, I'll start with you, any, any comments from you, sir?
I have none, thank you.
Uh, Bob, I'll go to your side.
Uh, I went out and reviewed the easement issue with the weir behind Casella, and in the flowway, and, uh, it looks like the repair is satisfactory as far as, you know, uh, we're concerned, we have access now, and it looks pretty good. Uh, we have had a couple of issues, uh, recently with, I will call it unauthorized locks on the second gate of the construction road into Prado, and, uh, I think we've got them resolved, the lock, the unauthorized locks have been removed, and we are going to have district locks.
The, there is a district lock on the cattle, on the cattle gate, on the gateway, and, and I have a work order in for the utilities team to put a chain and a district lock on the gate, the gateway at Prado.
Wasn't a big issue, we don't know where the locks came from, nobody in Prado knows about it, so I have no idea why anybody would have done it, but I got calls about it.
Been the security company, but we weren't sure, so.
You know, we got calls about it, but anyway, it's been resolved, and, uh, I think the road is the district road, or the, the road construction and all is still moving forward, it's glacial pace.
I think Rick by Lansky, I think, is pretty much on top of it, right?
He is very on top of it, yeah, we're just waiting now for permits, and.
Yeah, so we're, we're getting there, something that we thought was gonna be done in twenty twenty, here it is twenty twenty-two, and it's still not done. That's all I have.
Fantastic, uh, and everybody?
Only thing I've got is, is when we go into this budgety deal, uh, I hope we don't do what we, that fiasco we had last year. Uh, can we take, when we get the format from Stephen, that when the prices come in, let's use footnotes to explain how we get numbers. Last year, we had numbers in there, the one week they'd be there, the next week they'd be doubled, or halved, or even gone, and we didn't even know what the hell was going on.
Yeah.
So if we can just footnote everything, as to how we arrive at.
Yeah, I almost feel like we should take almost a contracting approach, where we're redlining items and, and keeping track of version.
Look with your version dates.
Yeah, uh, because to your point, you're right.
We had five versions last year.
But, but I, I do, I, I, if I understand Ed right, I think we have revisions last year, what we didn't have was notes.
Yeah.
And, and we had so many, and like, I feel like the last week, so, you know, like, I was really watching that budget, and it was, like, suddenly, like, a lot of stuff got moved, and almost like too much moved, too much deleted it, and then, you know, because we had, ended up adding at the, in the final date, so I think it's footnotes what you're watching, that's what I'll agree, yeah.
Well, I think too, I mean, it's.
It's revision we get.
It's also version control, I mean, I, if something gets, if, if it gets stricken, it, we should show that, uh, because more times than not, what staff does, and I appreciate it, but they go in, and it's okay, I'm gonna pull this, I'm gonna cut this, and I'll put it here, whatever, but then, we might get through our third or fourth iteration, and be like, oh, we need to put that back in, oh, why did we pull this? And so if we have a little bit better version control, I know it's hard to do in Excel, um, but maybe we can talk to Stephen and see if there's just a better way for us to do version control and footnoting, or comments.
Footnotes makes it easy, because you can timeline it almost to.
Are we going to be in the same position for the twenty-three budget that we were in twenty-two? Where if we put all of the real expenses in a given year, it's gonna jack up the home.
We shouldn't, because.
Or are we gonna try and do what we did last year?
Well, we, we shouldn't do it.
Right, we, it, it should.
It should already.
It is what it is, it'll be done.
Yeah, so.
Okay, but I thought the money we put in last year just covered last year, and we got the same hill to climb this year.
Well, no, a good example is the, uh, what was it, five hundred thousand for the, uh, waterway, the, the weirds. That number went into the budget to calculate a rate. We're not going to spend it this year, but we have to redo the calculations all over again next year with that in there.
But then, that's already included in the month that we borrow.
What you're asking is the increase overall on.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I.
That's not exactly, yeah.
I, I understand what you're saying, I agree with that. But we are going to have increases for things that are properly paid for within a budget year, not cap items, but, and if that increase gets to be.
And that, that's why I like the idea of, of, of the, uh, footnotes on this, to know just exactly, because if we got five hundred thousand or something, and we know damn good and well, it can't be done all in twenty-three, what the heck we got it in there for?
Well, that. If it's something. Bob, if it's something that we, 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 we increased it last year, and we explained to the residents here, there's an increase on the budget because of this light item, it, it's gonna cover for the four hundred. But now, we know that that same item needs to spend another two hundred, so is that what you're asking, right?
Yes, are we gonna get to the point where we got a couple?
Some items, probably.
Two hundred thousand dollars, and we're gonna say to ourselves, well, we don't wanna have a twenty percent increase, and none of us do, are we gonna go out and borrow money in the field again? Want a five-year plan, so we cut that number back from.
I think that that's where the bond validation would come into place, if we're expecting those capital projects, that's those things that you should send to me, that we can include in that bond number, and those that get spread out over twenty years then.
But that's where, in the line item, we can indicate that if it's a, a twenty-year financing or whatever, it's a P and I payment, it's not the item.
Okay.
And we need the, the.
We're pretty liberal in our interpretation of capital items last year, I wasn't real comfortable with that.
That's how Stephen came up with the numbers, is he took those capital, and then we just had.
That's why you can see the calculations things much easier to, if you're just picking out a number, and you're, trust me.
Well, it's kinda like we just throw a number against the wall, and that, that one that stuck, kept the torches and pitchforks out of the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I, I'm gonna be real sensitive to that this year, as we're projecting additional monies.
Um, Bobby?
Um. No, just wanna say, uh, thanks for the upgrade on the entrance on Griffin in eighty-two, over there by Hampton Park, Mainscape did really.
It looks really good. I did reach out to them about the irrigation, because I haven't seen anything in the middle, oh, I've only seen the bowl, the hens getting watered, I haven't seen the middle, so I did shoot them an email, and I'll check up Juan tomorrow as well.
Yeah, I think they did a.
It looks really nice.
They did, they did a really, really, really good job, and, uh, any updates into that drainage issue that was broken, those, whatever, the, the entrance by a defi building in Saucy? Nothing was done there.
Oh, no, they didn't get back to me on that, thank you, I'll, I'll follow up with that tomorrow too.
I assumed all the equipment on the grass out here wasn't to emphasize the need for a building?
No, that's for the Lake Bay.
Like a visual aid, okay.
That's for, that's for Stony Brook.
No, that's actually. The day that I saw, I said, what has Kenny done? I literally, I walked in, I was like, what has Kenny purchased?
Met Tower rented that, Met Tower rented that, they're storing it here until we can start the project in Stony Brook.
All right, what I would do is, uh, let's, let's take a ten-minute break, and we will circle back at five o'clock.
So do we, we're just continuing this meeting, uh, till after the executive session?
Well, no, we're still in a regular meeting, you know, we had, we're gonna take a recess until. We'll start the official session, I have, yes.
So we're gonna take a break for ten minutes, and then we'll come back. Rested meeting is closed.
Watch my pristine hair. Watch my pristine care. God, that looks like somebody has. Oh, yeah. He gave one layer.
Yeah.
Probably hidden here. Another layer just says.
Need a real one.
Another thing that says. Other layer.
Well, there's.
We know. Because. There is first load. I'm just. But. Twenty years, I mean. But I do. Or you say, okay. This is easement. Got the call turn you're getting and stuff. We're all happy to hear that. Are we going to do the entire? Which they will send themselves.
So that's.
Before we look at. We're not even sure. Busted. You know, your mind. The lady driving the car.
Yeah, she gets the rest.
I know her story every year. It's his comments. It's about the number of visitors all three years.
Oh, yeah. I know what's trying to say unless you'll make that.
This one I see you made a sign. We had corporate secretary.
Discussion. As we're going to discussion of you, whether it is. Changed. To. So. And I understand. And buying. At the same time.
I signed the wrong thing. Yeah. I follow. Come on.
There, you know, it was all of us.
Oh.
Where. She's. Yeah, we are. I don't know if anybody can. We're going to be here.
You wherever you're most. You're enjoying it. We stopped.
Yes.
Oh, I know you.
I know.
Please do.
Well, tell tell these guys what happened this morning. We're emailing them at six this morning.
So I have a very smart husband and Wendy Frank and I just. Because you were sleeping. So I'm like, I'm done. So I can also start working. I'm sleeping.
There's no district clerk. What district clerk is? Secretary. Yeah, I think we need to change that. It's their forms. You can't. I've tried to change this. Trust me. I was just saying. Assistant secretary. You want something else?
There's not.
Okay.
But we have snacks.
I thought you were going to cost going to get some snacks.
That's all you have here. Thanks. I like it. If I had.
The up plus for any problems. So I'm not sure.
Yeah, we're like.
Tony, what's our timeline on this on the five allegations?
So initially, we were trying to do.
It's self.
Yeah.
Did anything happen after we hung up? Did she call any? Kavanaugh. Yeah, I heard that. You heard that. You said she said call her back, right? Make sure that I didn't hear that part. See you later at one point. So. She didn't say in gourds. It was in large. No.
Like a reopening. That works. Okay, five o'clock. Um. Can you tell him when it was today?
You're hungry?
I went to look for snacks for nothing. Um, yes. Do my best. I'm driving. I'll be.
I have dog?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a dog.
One dog?
One dog. Walk her every morning.
Yeah, I don't know. So I got another dog. I have three dogs.
Well, no way I do that. How do you go? How do you go? How do you go on vacation and do anything?
Are they big?
Ours is eighty five pounds. She's eating us out of house and home.
But yeah, I think he.
And they like each other.
They do.
And.
So set up a call with like.
Steven, Blue, Joffe, Steve, Fred, Russ Wire.
So the normal group?
Yeah, the whole group.
Okay.
Joseph can sort of get up.
Okay. Yeah, that's what this is official.
Yeah, this time we've got to do that budget different. That was.
Yeah, this is not. Well, it's well, it's. Yeah.
Yeah, that was the problem.
You'll get to hear it.
I couldn't feel it was the honest.
I have to go.
Then you've got to immortalize what you did, why you did it, and you don't forget it or let something fall through the cracks. That's what's bad. And there's no way you're ever going to get down to where you estimate these. They don't get done for whatever reason. That's just going to happen. See, I've got.
All right, see the shoulder.
Yeah, it's about.
Yeah, my my script, sir.
You have the. I just want for the purposes of this, for the purposes of this, it hasn't hurt to any.
Where's my? Where's my section? It's not highlighted.
We need to highlight it for you.
I know.
We've been what you've been doing all this time?
I know. I've been. Hurry up because her stomach is growling over here. We can't have a zoom. We can. Three.
I'm waiting for you. I'm going to turn off the cameras, mute us and stop. When you were telling me. Yes, when you tell me. Because that was such a mess last time. I'm just leaving that all up. I'm just going to turn everything off. So we'll kill sleep black screen and hear nothing.
I'm here.
Get two minutes. Hold sorry then.
And like I have to go. Once you leave, you can't come back.
Oh, I'd be I'd be gone.
Go quick.
No, I was go. It's okay.
Oh. I was chanting and her baby and everything.
Yeah, we got a storm coming. Okay, we got rain coming.
There's always schedules to go, well, it's over an hour and a half, but I don't.
I'm hoping less than.
Uh, I'm hoping fifteen thirty minutes.
I'm guessing about thirty. It's be about a half an hour.
Yeah, I think about a half an hour.
I'll give him the evil eye from over here.
I'll give you the sign. Kick who?
No, Tony's not meeting here.
Give me all the way he's talking about.
He's insinuating.
Who's calling?
Doug just wants all his neighbors to come to his pool while ours is closed.
That's just rude. Yeah.
Might have to sit in here anyway with the storm coming. What's coming, short?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
So I don't fight. I guess I don't blame her.
Be here shortly.
You can do it.
We're not recording, are we?
Yeah.
Far.
What? We are recording right now. We have to be recording until we get to that point. Oh, yeah, there. I actually brought them in here so that I would remember them. They've been laying in here all afternoon.
Thank you.
Yes. And if I need to, I can plug in and pull it up just for us to see. So. Paper. Yep, that's what you I believe that's what you asked for. If not, let me know and I will print it out.
Mr. Chairman? Okay, we will call the meeting back to order. And at this time, we're going to commence an attorney-client session between the Board Supervisors of the Gateway Service Community Development District and our attorneys. This session will be closed to members of the public under section two eight six point zero one one. I guess section eight of the Sunshine Law. A governmental body may meet in private with its chief executive officer and its attorney to discuss certain matters relating to pending litigation. Subject matter of the attorney-client session shall be confined to settlement negotiations or strategy sessions related to litigation expenditures concerning pending litigation to which the district is presently and partly before a court style. Reaching party. Yeah, of course. Gateway Service District Community Development District versus Fortillon, Inc., DBA Fortillon Water Works. Case number two two dash C A dash zero 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 four six six pending in the Circuit Court in and for the twentieth Judicial Circuit, Lee County, Florida. This session will be recorded by a certified court reporter who is directed to report the times of the commencement and termination of the session, the names of all persons speaking, and all discussion and proceedings. Upon the conclusion of the litigation, a transcript a transcript of this session will be made a part of public record. The estimated length of the session is approximately one hour, but may be terminated earlier or extended longer. The following persons will attend this closed-door session: Supervisor Doug Banks, Ed Tinkle, Flavia Walsh, Bob Geppert, Laura Leroy, interim district manager, as the district's chief administrator or executive officer, district counsel Anthony P. Pierce, Jr., and Lenore T. Breakfield, and a court reporter. Let the record reflect that pursuant to the requirements of the Sunshine Law, notice has been given of the time and date of today's closed session as well as the names of the participants as evident by a copy of the notice published on March twenty fifth, twenty twenty two in the Fort Myers Press. The time is now five oh eight.